...town council meeting for March 2nd, 2015. You could join me for the pledge of allegiance.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is item B, consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. The next item's public comments at this time. There's somebody in the audience that has a comment that does not have to do with anything that's on the agenda tonight. Now is your chance to speak on that. Anybody in the audience? None? Okay. Next item is the policy agenda. There's no news presentations and awards. Public hearing's the nominations. Services committee would be...
Yep. Thank you, Mayor Ryder. At the February 10th meeting, the services committee voted unanimously to recommend to the council that Joshua Sargent be reappointed to the pool board. I make a motion that the council reappoint Joshua Sargent to the pool board.
Second.
Questions? Public comment? Any none? All in favor? Item 3B is Planning Development Committee Recommendation. Counselor Shakespeare?
We had an individual, Andrew Nelson, make a recommendation to reappoint him to the planning board. I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Comments? Public comments? All in favor? Item 3C, Counselor Shakespeare?
We also had another regular member of the planning board to reappoint, James Davitt, and I'll make that motion that we reappoint him to the planning board.
Second.
Denise?
Just a minute. Denise?
Currently, Mr. Davitt is an associate member of the planning board, and this is to appoint him as a regular member.
My apologies. He's an associate member, and I'd like to make a motion to appoint him as a regular member of the planning board.
Second.
Comments? Any public comments? All in favor? Okay. The next item is item 4, Unfinished Business, MRC. Update on Proposed Municipal Solid Waste Recycling and Processing Facility. This time, Dean Bennett's going to come forward and introduce this.
Good evening, folks. As promised, the MRC committed to the council to keep us surprised of what progress is being made in terms of the Fiber Right Project up in the middle of the triangle. And Greg is here, the executive director of the MRC, to update you on their progress to date, and it sounds exciting. And I'll introduce him, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, town council members, town manager Lassard. I'm Greg Launer with the MRC. Appreciate the opportunity to be on your agenda this evening to provide you an update of the progress we've made in the seven or eight weeks that have passed since we last discussed the Fiber Right Project here in town. We have reached a couple of milestones. My board of directors met on the 4th of February to consider entering into a development agreement with Fiber Right. That's a framework for the overall contract structure that will be put in place in connection with our overall project. So that agreement was unanimously adopted by the MRC board. And I did want to mention, there is a cost structure. A common question that we hear, working for municipalities, is, well, do we have a sense of what the cost structure with this new arrangement will look like? And that is included in the terms of the development agreement. And we are looking at a year-one tip fee, a gross tip fee paid into the facility of $70 a ton, and a net disposal cost after revenue sharing of $57 a ton. So that's very much in line with our current costs. And given that that year-one rate was still three years out, we're highly encouraged about the way the cost elements, the arrangement are coming together. The second important milestone we reached at the February 4th meeting was, we had commissioned a third-party peer review report to be conducted by the engineering department at the University of Maine. And what's different about this project as compared to the project that we have been involved in for 25 years is the innovative approach for organics management. There are chemical and biological process components to the new project where we don't have the historical familiarity with those elements. So we wanted to reach out, get an independent expert's opinion of whether or not the new system components would be feasible, scalable, and reliable for the needs of the communities over the long term. Thankfully, the report had positive findings in those respects, which has been key to elevating our confidence in the overall project. And I think it was an important component to give the board of directors the confidence to unanimously enter into the development agreement and take this to the next level. So since then, we've been busy at work with Fiber Right, developing the overall contract structure of the new arrangement. And I'm pleased to report that the Fiber Right folks have been continuously adding technical experts to their team, assigning them to the main project, which is a very positive sign. The next area that we've been busy at work on is, you know, being a very closely regulated enterprise such as this. We have been making a lot of preparations for the technical submissions that would be required to be an applicant, you know, for licenses, both locally and at the state level. So those areas have been consuming a fair amount of our time. We're getting all the technical materials put together. My hope is, I hesitate to target a particular date, but I think it's important, actually, to establish target dates and try to stick to them. But our hope is that we're in a position to be a formal applicant here locally and at the state level by about the 15th of May. And that's not a lot of time. We've got a lot of material yet that we need to pull together. But that's the target date, as things stand today. And the application process itself takes a fair amount of time. So we want to continue to move along at all deliberate speed on that front. And I guess one other element I'll mention, we have received questions, written questions, from citizens here in town. And so we've initiated an approach where we're going to take all the written questions that we receive and provide written responses to interested citizens. And so we've begun that. And I believe that we are also going to take the, any written answers we provide, provide them to staff here at the town. So that information can be placed on the MRC website and the town's website, if there's interest. So we certainly welcome any and all questions, comments, interest in the progress that we're making. And I guess with that, I really didn't intend to speak at length, so I'll stop there and see if I can answer any questions.
Counselor Marble?
Greg, thank you. Especially on the last part about keeping the public informed and making that communication available, I think is very helpful. Could the town, at some point when it's comfortable, see a copy or have a copy of the engineer's findings, the engineer's report on Fiber Right? Or is that protected information in some way proprietary?
Yeah, well, the two agreements that I'd mentioned that the board, you know, did receive and act on, those are public documents, and, yep, we'd be very happy to share those, yeah, in full form, yeah, with anyone who's interested in seeing it.
Maybe we could have one in the economic development office. And the other question is, the state-level licensure is DEP? Is that correct?
Yes, yep.
Any other questions? Are there any public questions or comments? None?
I'd just like to thank Greg for coming this evening and keeping the town of Hampden and the public informed of the progress. I know you and Dean are working diligently on this, and we appreciate that.
Yep, well, I appreciate the opportunity to come in and give an update, and be happy to do that anytime. In fact, I should mention, and I may, I failed to mention, that one of my board members, Karen Frissell from Brewers, with me here tonight. I believe the date's April 29. We have discussed, we typically have been holding our quarterly board meetings up the road in Orno, but we had talked and thought it would be a good idea if we held a regular board meeting here in Hampden on the 29th of April. And we certainly would reserve time. I mean, we would have a regular body of business to conduct, but we would be sure to reserve a block of time in particular for local discussion about how we're doing with the project, and if that seems like a constructive thing to do, we'd be happy to do that.
Now, you said in April. Is there one in March? Every month you have a?
We, our regular meetings are quarterly.
Oh, quarterly, okay.
Yep. We do occasionally have a meeting in between where things have gotten busy.
I went to your one up in Orno, Dean and I. It was pretty good. Quite informative.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you all.
Next item on the agenda is item 4B, the impact of the governor's proposed budget. Town manager Sule Sade's going to discuss that with us.
The council had asked for review of the impact of the proposed budget for the items that were, have direct or indirect impact on municipal operations or on residents. And so I did, done a portion of this, and our assessor, Kelly Carter, has taught, has analyzed the impact of potential changes to the Betty Better proposal as well. The proposal that is to tax, tax-exempt entities with over $500,000 in value has a net loss to the town of about $8,5757 at our current mill rate. And that's because we lose one and gain one, but the one we gain is less than the one we lost that we currently get service fees for. The bigger one, obviously, is revenue sharing, but this is just the end of the train. At the state 5% level of sales and income tax that revenue-sharing law is supposed to be funded at, the town would be receiving $867,855 a year. And the town did receive that level of funding back in the early 2000s through mid-2000s. In the past several years, they've reduced that 5% down to where the amount of revenue sharing that the town received last year is supposed to receive this year, coming year, is $342,823, which is $525,000 less than what we used to get in revenue sharing. And in the second year of the budget, that $342,823 is supposed to go away as well. And that $342,823 that's left is, represents about 58 cents on the mill rate. The first $525,000 that we lost represents about 89 cents on the mill rate.
How much did you say that our revenue sharing is going to decrease by over last year?
It's going to stay the same as last year, the 340, but the year out, the second year of the state budget, it's supposed to go away. So it will, in talking at our goals and objectives meeting, we talked about estimating only half of what we'd actually received this year so that it was a step down, that we could use the second half in the second year, rather than have it go like this. We'd step down to that. But clearly, for us and for many communities, this, that's the biggest part of the death of revenue sharing, I guess is the way to, but it's been more than just this year and coming. It's been for the past several. The homestead exemption, winners and losers, and there are winners and losers. People over 65 would get a double, instead of a $10,000 exemption, would get a $20,000 exemption. And so they would, instead of the $175 reduction on taxes, would see a $350 reduction. However, for people under 65, they would get zero, and that would be a $175 increase to any residence tax bill under the age of 65 who formally got the homestead exemption. And in order to have an idea of how that impacted us, I took the voting list, birthday years, and the list of homestead exemptions to compare, and everybody over 19, older than 1950 was in the 65, and everybody, it's not exact, but it gives us a good idea of what percentage. And found that about 31.5% of the people receiving homestead are over the age of 65. And 69.5% are, or 1,220 of them are under 65. The town is required to fund 50% of the homestead exemption. The state funds half the exemption and the town does. And at the present time, under the current system, the town raises $155,654.63 to fund our half of the exemption. Under the governor's proposal, we would only be required to fund $98,175, which is doubling the 65 and eliminating those under 65, which would mean that we were raising 63% of the cost of this benefit for 31% of the people, 31 and a half percent of the people that formally got it. And more importantly, that 1,220 people would see an increase in their tax bill, even though if the town did not increase the mill rate and the school didn't have any extra, add any extra, and the county didn't, and we stayed flat, people would see a $175 increase in their tax bill because that exemption, that state exemption, would go away. So that is, as I said, there's winners and losers. If you're over 65, it looks pretty good. If you're under 65, it doesn't look quite as good. In a purely dollars that the town has to raise, because this is not our exemption, it's a $57,000 reduction in what we have to raise. But I'm not sure the 1,220 people who got the $175 increase are going to say, "Thank you." I mean, it's a state exemption. It's not ours, but that's hard to translate when it comes on your local tax bill.
And it's dwarfed by the increase in the loss of revenue sharing.
Yeah, absolutely. The property tax fairness credit, and now this program is not operated through the town. However, its stated intent is to help lower-income residents stay in their homes by refunding a portion of property tax or rent paid over a certain percentage of their income. And last year, when the legislature did away with the tax and rent refund and established this property tax fairness credit, it hurt a lot of people that were formerly receiving the benefit, in that it reduced it dramatically over what it was in prior years. The change to this ups the amount a bit for those under 65 and those over 65, and also changes the formula by which they do it. Again, this fairness credit is entirely a state program. However, its goal was to help with property taxes or rent, depending on what someone was paying. And the, they did away with the separate application, and now people have to apply for it on a state tax return. And what we found in the past year is that many people, many older people don't file state tax returns, and so they weren't quite up on how this had to go. But education funding moves further away from the 55% of funding that's required by LD1. It was passed more than 10 years ago. Last year, the state paid 46.8% of essential programs and services, and under this budget, it would pay 46.25%. And so what that requires at the state level is that the mill rate effort from communities that you require, our communities required to do for education moves from 8.1 to 8.44. In Hampden, the current mill rate effort for education, the portion of our mill rate that's dedicated to education is $9.97, $9.975 of the 1750 mill rate. The mill rate effort for the county is $1.22, $1.225 of the 1750. And the municipal mill rate effort is $6.30 of the 1750 mill rate. The amount, and over and above the 8.1 mills that we are required to raise for education pays for additional debt service on the new high school that the three communities voted to include. That's $6 million for the extra size of some classrooms and the larger performing arts center, et cetera. And it also pays for funding of programs that are over and above what EPS says the baseline funding is. So we're required to, by law, to meet an 8.1 mill this year. In Hampden, right now, we're at 9.975. And given the boost in the required amount from 8.1 to 8.44, we will also see a corresponding boost because we're already over that by a certain amount. So there will be an increase in mill rate effort that's somewhat, if the school continues to just operate the way it has, there will still be that additional increase required to meet what the state has boosted on their end of the formula. General assistance. The proposed change to this program will have very little impact on the town due to the low amount that the town expends per year for the program. This budget would tie the reimbursement amount to the average town program expenditures for the last six years, and reimbursement would be 50% of that expenditure. But the way that they would do that reimbursement would be at 90% of expenditures until you reach 40% of the prior six-year average. And after that, the town receives 10% reimbursement until you hit the total 50%. The town annually budgets $10,000 for this program and has never spent more than $8,000. We have received 50% reimbursement of that amount for the state, and that primarily wouldn't change. That's our average. Under the current program, the state considers that the town, our Hampden, based on population valuation, could spend approximately $170,000 per year on general assistance, and it would reimburse the town 50% of expenses up to that number and 90% of expenditures over that number. The new proposal limits total reimbursement to 50% of the average spent for the past six years, so it boots out that liability number that we currently have sitting out there, which, as I said, it wouldn't hurt us unless there was some drastic change that impacted that expenditure amount. New available, new availability of very low-cost housing, some major job loss in the region, something that caused our population to shift in what we currently have. Betty and Better, Kelly is, in the first year, it looks like a tax loss of, revenue loss of approximately $27,433. In the second year, when it goes, it moves by percentage down. It's $54,866. And in the third year out, it's $82,299. And by the fourth year, the total loss is $109,732. So this conversion of property from one class of tax program to another would have significant impact. And for a community like Hampden, whose total personal property assessment is around $400,000, this is 25% of that cost in the fourth year, or 25% of that income in the fourth year, it's highly unlikely that this will be successful. Many, many communities have personal property assessments that are huge in comparison to their, and that this would wipe them out pretty much. So those are the elements that are part of the governor's budget that impact how the town is funded or direct monies that people get from the state related to that.
Any questions in the council?
These are just the governor's proposals, so there's no set yet, obviously. No decisions made.
No, but we provided to the committee, they asked for an impact by community. What's your loss? You know, what, how does this impact you? We've done that. They're continuing to hold hearings on all components of the, it's a very complicated document. This, the stuff that impacts here is just one part of it, you know? So I think that it will, we went, I think it was last year, they all started to run together that we were approving a budget on July 1 because we didn't know what the state budget was going to be. Was that last year, Denise? I think it was last, or the year before. Yeah, because we, we've put it off in two years in order to, because we didn't have information on what the funding would be.
Counselor Marble?
Follow-up to Bill's point. If you can, Sue, if staff, when the dust does settle on the state budget, not in so much detail, but at least have a list of bullet points of what's changed so residents can know what the consequences of those changes are. That would be helpful, I think.
The biggest one, apart from revenue sharing, is the homestead issue, which for a huge number of people is going to be, it's hard to explain why that's not our fault, because you can't, you can't offset it. Not everybody gets it. Businesses don't get it. You can't adjust enough in, cutting your budget won't change that. You know, it doesn't, it won't even it out, so. You know, it doesn't, it won't even it out, so.
Is there a way for?
Is there a way for us to possibly educate the public that's going to fall into that? Send a notice to them? Anything to let them know?
Newsletter.
And the reason I ask that-
Well, we talked about doing a newsletter around the budget for the purpose of letting people know what numbers were.
I guess that's a good first step. Not everybody's going to read that newsletter.
It's true.
So, and I tend to see a little more of what happens on the other end there, and people will see this, and even if they have this in a escrow account, sometimes it takes a couple of years before the bank catches up with that also. So, then it ends up being a significant increase. So, if we can give them some kind of notice, I don't know if it's legal or not, but it's worth asking.
Well, we can, the consequences of something like the homestead exemption, that's a state exemption. If they change the rules for the state, the towns almost helpless to do anything more than pay whatever they say we're going to pay and allow whatever they say they're going to allow. There's not a way for us to offset it. So, if that stays the way it is, some communities have sent letters to property owners saying, "Your property tax is going up X dollars because the state has done away with the homestead exemption for everyone under the age of 65. If you have a question, call your legislature." I mean, they've taken that thing. But the, something like that, that's a state exemption. That is clear and makes sense. Other things, like what do you do about losing revenue sharing? There's, you know, what is it, this year's budget, you've asked to see what it looks like to absorb everything that is going away or gets, coming from somewhere else, and you're going to see what the-
The only thing I was really referring to was the homestead exemption.
Oh, yeah.
That's it. I mean, I don't want to send out a letter on everything else.
No, you can notify people, if they go through with changing the homestead, you certainly can do a notification that-
Right. That's what I was concerned about, to see if it was possible for us to let these folks know, because that's something that, if it does get passed, it's going to happen, so.
I was just thinking, with the people watching at home, you and I could take a risk, for example, other councillors could if they want to, and say, "When you get this bad news, if you have questions, call us," and then we can find out what we don't know in the process.
We're going to put your name on there, Congressman Dennis. Any other comments? Council Shakespeare?
Yeah, the pain and suffering, obviously, if this goes to fruition, will potentially be great for a lot of communities, somewhat for our own, but I just want to let the public be rest assured that this council will do everything that we can to keep the mill rate down as much as possible. But obviously, we've got operating expenses too, but, and I know for those not getting that $175 homestead exemption, that's going to hurt. Why the seniors are going to double theirs, I don't quite understand, so. But anyways, you know, we will do what we can to lessen the pain and suffering if possible.
Any other comments? Public comments? Okay. Next item would be Item 5A, sidewalk plow options. During the Finance and Administration meeting prior to this, we were informed that the trackless snowblower that does the sidewalks in town has blown its engine. We have a price of a new machine of $150,000. We have a price of a new motor of $12,000 to $14,000. It was a recommendation from the Finance and Administration Committee, where the town managers come up with a plan that we could rent a machine for $2,000 a month for the next two months, if necessary, to get us through the winter. It was a recommendation by Finance and Administration to do that. So, any questions from the council?
Well, no questions, but I think we're only going to have to do it for one month, because winter's going to end at the end of March, so no more snow. We've had our fair share.
I think she worked that option in.
But, yeah, $150,000 for a new machine is definitely out of the cards at the moment. I think we're going to discuss this at Infrastructure the next meeting. And like I said during Finance, I hate to even spend $2,000 a month, but I've seen that little John Deere with a snowblower on the front of it, and it's quite a task to snowblow the sidewalk with that. But, you know, things happen, so.
Do I have a recommendation from the council?
I don't think we have, or do we? Sue?
There's sufficient funds within the operating budget to do the rental, and as I said in Finance, the purpose is so that we're not doing some emergency thing right before we do the budget, that this allows us to, sufficient time to put some thought into what you really want to do next, whether you want to rebuild the old one, buy a new one, or what we want to do with it.
Any public comment, then? Okay, Item 5B, request to use computer reserve funds for the replacement of police cruiser computers. That was discussed tonight, and they needed three new computers for the police cruisers. Total was $13,315. They were going to join in with the state police and their order of computers. It was a recommendation from the Finance and Administration, and it was going to come out of the computer reserve funds, which had money enough in there to take those out. Do I have any comments? Do I have a motion?
Nobody wants to make a motion. I'll make a motion that we take out of reserves funds. Exactly how much is it?
$13,315 and change.
13 and change?
$13,315 and 26 cents.
Okay, didn't have that amount here. For replacement of police cruiser, there's three computer systems. What do they call it? Tough something?
Tough books.
Tough books for the three police cruisers. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? Public comments? All in favor? Okay, Item 5C, the ski-in center lighting, the Infrastructure Committee recommendation. Councilor Marble?
At the meeting on the 23rd of February, we went over this, and with the understanding that a rebate in place will keep us under $10,000 for this line, the committee recommended unanimously to council to authorize the project and go ahead with Hampton Electric.
Okay, do I have a motion? You made the motion?
I can. Go ahead.
Would you please?
I move that we proceed with the lighting proposal previously documented at the Infrastructure Committee with Hampton Electric.
Second.
I'll second that.
Public comments? All in favor? All opposed? Item 5E, zoning ordinance text amendment, Planning Board, Councilor Shakespeare, I'll let you handle the next.
Seven.
Yes.
Seven referrals from the Planning and Development Committee. The first one is to refer to the Planning Board, zoning ordinance text amendment, Article 3.13, Business B, as in Bravo District. That's the first one.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, well, it goes to the Planning Board, right?
A councillor has to introduce it. Have a motion to introduce that to Planning Board?
It's not a motion, though, is it? Just an introduction by councillor to refer to the Planning Board. I don't think we normally vote on going to the Planning Board. Do we?
This is the referral to the Planning Board.
Okay. Okay. That's-
So, I'll make, okay, I'll make a motion that we refer this to the Planning Board. Do I have to say the article again?
No.
Second.
Public comment? All in favor?
Okay, the second one is zoning ordinance text amendment, Article 4.15, swimming pools, and Article 7.2 definitions. We discussed that at Planning and Development Committee, and I'll make a motion, a recommendation, to refer this to the Planning Board.
Second.
Discussion? Public comment? I have a vote.
The third one is life safety code ordinance amendments to adopt the current state adopted and amended life safety code, NFPA 101-2009. Planning Development Committee discussed that, and I'll make a motion that, as a recommendation, is to introduce this to public hearing, and I'll make the motion that we do so on April the 6th, 2015.
Second.
Since this one's not going to the Planning Board, it just needs to be introduced.
Okay. Do I need to make motions? Just introduce it. Okay. I'd like to introduce the fire prevention code ordinance amendment to adopt the current state adopted and amended uniform fire code, NFPA 1-2006. Planning Board, yep, Planning and Development Committee recommendation was to introduce this for public hearing on April the 6th, 2015. Next one was to repeal of the current building code ordinance, Planning Development Committee recommendation and introduction for public hearing. Doesn't have a date on that. I'll refer this also for public hearing. Next one is a repeal of the current residential building code ordinance. Planning and Development Committee recommends an introduction for public hearing. The last one is adoption of the main uniform building and energy code ordinance called MUBEC. That's the acronym. Planning Development Committee recommends and refers this to a public hearing.
Okay. And the last item, 5K, was put on the agenda by Councillor Dupre. She was not able to be here tonight and asked if we could put this on hold until she was available to be here, and at that time, she'll explain that. Okay. The next item is committee reports. Services Committee, Councillor McAvoy.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. At the February 10th meeting, we discussed the reappointment of Joshua Sargent to the pool board, which the council voted on earlier. We also talked about the amenities that the town would provide at our current parks, the Paper Mill, Marina, and Dorothea Dix. Each park will be equipped with trash cans, picnic tables, and one porta potty. Dorothea Dix will be the only park which will have fire pits. We also looked at, took a preliminary look at the library budget in preparation for consideration by the council. The consensus was that the library is operating within a budget which affords little room for reduction. However, any reductions which the library administrator and the town manager may determine before budget time arrives will certainly be considered. The Services Committee's next meeting is next Monday, March 9, at 6:00 PM in this chamber. The agenda is not set yet, but my intention is to invite the pool administrator to discuss the current budget, as was done for the library, and I encourage the public to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Marble for Infrastructure?
We had a meeting on February 23. As I mentioned earlier, all seven councillors were in attendance. I'll apologize to everybody now. I made some references that I was making that night with regards to a table of contents that I don't have in front of me, so I'm going to fumble on a couple of these. We agreed with the wording in the work Town Manager Lassard had done around advertising for the next director of Public Works. We mentioned the ski-in center lighting proposal just a few minutes ago. Sue, what I don't remember is the committee requesting to go ahead and invite Jim Wilson to research outstanding issues. I'm drawing a complete blank on what that was.
That's related to the site plan that may be necessary-
Above the pool?
At the pool or here for the-
Thank you. We had a long discussion with committee members and Mr. and Mrs. King. There was general agreement that we need that and a plan. This is about the future of the town in terms of recreation department and the number of fields we're going to need. There was general agreement that we need data and a plan, that more land will be essential, that public-private partnerships would be good, and that this work needs to happen within the Services Committee as well, that a longer-term agreement for use of the ski-in center may be necessary, and that Shelley and the town manager should advocate for what is needed. Regarding new business, the committee recommended unanimously to council to cease the 50% program. And Councillor McAvoy requested the subject of truck jackbrake signs and the lack of a town ordinance be included on the agenda for the next meeting. I've seen correspondence since then that we have an ordinance in place, and I don't know if that resolves the issue, or we'll simply go ahead and have it on the meeting. The next meeting will be the 23rd of this month at 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Dennis, real quick, it's my understanding, I heard the agreement, H.R. Bushard, for us to use the fields, he's not renewing the lease, is that correct?
Haven't heard anything.
I think that's been, it's not going to renew the lease, and I'm sure it has to do with the development of, with MRC, which is understandable and everything, but that just probably puts a little more sense of urgency that we need to find some land and build some fields.
Thank you. Okay, next would be Planning Development. Councilor Shakespeare?
Okay, a lot of the items we discussed, I just listed for a public hearing and referral to the Planning Board. But also, had a resident who's with us this evening, Walter Couples, lives on the Main Road. He talked to the committee about rezoning a portion of the Main Road north. That's basically from the old high school down to 1A area. I'm sorry, down to Western Avenue on 1A, from Residential B District to Village Commercial. He indicated that most recent count of landowners in the area supported the proposed change. I think there was all but one was in support. We also discussed draft subdivision ordinance amendments, as I went through this evening. Also, Councillor Marble asked some questions about the Coldbrook Road, and because this is a major area, future commercial land development possibility in our plan. Also discussed private ways discussion. Discussed a role by both private roads and for some sort of frontage exception where a single lot is proposed that would not otherwise have any use for a private or public road. And Bob Osborne's going to do some more investigation on this and get back to us. Also discovered, discussed the MUBEC, which is main uniform building and energy code ordinance. That was it.
Thank you. And on the finance tonight, as you've seen, we had the discussion on the sidewalk plow options. We had the discussion of police laptop cruisers. Also, we continue to work on the council rules, review of those, going over them. Councillor Dupre has kind of been leading that up, so we held off on that tonight, and we will continue on that at the next Finance Committee meeting, if she's available. So, with that, the next item, managers' report?
The public safety floor project that the council approved is underway. You can see a little bit of the evidence of it coming through the door there, where they've been removing tiles, but that should take approximately two weeks to complete the job, which is for the upper floor of the public safety side to be replaced with the epoxy-finished concrete floors. We have one property that's now foreclosed on for unpaid 2012-13 property taxes that is located at 106 Manning Mill Road. The record owner did not respond to any notices that the town sent. The mortgage holders did sign for their notices, but did not make payments to prevent the foreclosure. This item will be on the March 16th- This item will be on the March sixteenth agenda, asking the council to begin the process associated with the town-owned property ordinance. The first step is to notify the record owner that they have thirty days to pay all years of outstanding taxes, costs, and interest. And if that does not happen, then the town notifies the abutters and advertises the property for sale. But that will be on your March sixteenth. Yes.
Is it, is the property currently occupied?
I do not believe so. It, the owner of the property was not the occupant of the property for a number of years. And, and according to the mortgage holder, nobody was paying anything to anyone for a number of years. So I'm not sure that there's anyone in there at the time, but the record owner isn't. And then the budget. The first draft of the department head budgets are due to me by the middle of March. Although the charter requires me to have the budget draft of the council no later than May first, it is my goal to have the budget to the council for review no later than the middle of April in order to allow sufficient time for deliberations prior to the June deadline for adoption. And we received our county tax bill for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen year, and it is sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents higher for fifteen, sixteen than it was for fourteen, fifty.
Thank you.
Sue? When do we know we're going to receive the bill from the school? From RSC twenty-two?
When do we know how much?
Expecting it, yeah.
How, what that increase is? They're working on that process right now. They, they haven't given me a number yet. They were talking about a percentage increase in the budget. They had, that they were going to try to keep it to no more than three percent. However, they, in subsequent conversations, the superintendent indicated that it was their goal not to have us see another three hundred thousand-plus year, which the past two years have been anomalies in terms of what we've seen for increases. So hopefully, we won't. And I also have prepared the document to send to the school requesting the payment for seventy percent of the cost of the school resource officer in this year's budget that you requested that I do at the goals and objectives session, rather than have them just pay the thirty thousand dollars. You wanted them to pay, me to ask them to pay the full cost of the time that the resource officer spent at the school, which is seventy-one percent of his time.
Sue, what, you said that we're going to try to do a budget no more than three percent above? That's what, a hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred thousand?
No, their budget's twenty-nine million. So when you do three percent on that, it's.
On that part of the budget?
The whole budget.
Twenty-nine, that's a big.
Well, twenty-nine's the, it includes all their debt service that goes with this. So some of that becomes, I know that he told me that their increase in health insurance premiums for this year alone, just the health insurance premiums, not salary or anything, was three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
I guess what I'm trying to see is what they're talking about, a three percent increase on their budget, what's that mean to the town?
Well, and that's what I'm, I'm saying is that they've got, they've got some options. They, they need to incorporate this three hundred and some thousand in health insurance costs. And they also have to incorporate their contract. They're in, they're negotiating, I believe, now. But they, they're, they have to accommodate all of those things. He talked about having to make cuts in order to even bring it in at the lower figure. You know, if we were back down to the hundred thousand or so figure that we used to see annually as an increase as opposed to the three hundred or four hundred, then that's more manageable for us.
Okay, thank you. Sue, the, at the end of the, just when they were taking a vote on the budget, they put in a foreign language teacher in the middle school. I think it was additional hundred and ten thousand. Was that person ever hired?
I don't know. They, it, what they did was they added a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the budget as part, on the floor of the budget meeting. And the estimate for that program, because it had originally been presented as part of it, was a hundred and twenty-one thousand. So I don't, I don't know what happened with that, but I do know that those were the two numbers associated with the. Hundred and fifty was what they added, or was what got added on the floor of the meeting.
One more question. That three percent of the budget that they figure is going to increase, that's not to us. We're responsible for sixty-something percent of that three percent per se.
The, the three percent budget increase, depending on what is increased and what they're, you know, what's from the state and what's associated with debt service and all that, that moves that number around. Plus, if they're going to offset some of their increases by decreases, there, it's. If the impact to us, to Hamden, is a hundred or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more, that's more in line with what we used to see as increases on an annual basis from the school budget.
Thank you, so wait and see.
Well, they don't have the two hundred and some thousand dollars they had last year to offset that. That was additional state revenue from the prior year that was used as an offset either. So we'll see when they give us a number. But they have indicated that having someone from the council involved in that process is a positive thing. So if there's any counselor who wants to be involved with the school budget, we can.
Okay, councilor comments? Counselor Saroyes?
No comment.
Counselor Wild?
I do have one thing I'd like to read. As many of you know, and have pointed out, I'm a newly elected county counselor. I say that because just a few months ago, I was walking around in the district and I was talking to many Hamden residents. Since I've been elected, I've also had the privilege of talking with Hamden residents from all over this town. Without exception, the people I've talked to want this council to listen to what they want and to get it done. I want the taxpayers of Hamden, Hamden to know that I, along with other counselors up here, intend to do just that. Over the past few months, I've had multiple residents speak to me about the town office hours. And the majority of those I've heard from were very unhappy with the town office being closed on Friday. Fridays are when people consider weekend activities. They consider the needs of hunting and fishing licenses, registrations of snowmobiles, boats, motorcycles, ATVs, campers, yard sale permits, transfer station stickers, and building permits, to name a few. I want those friends, neighbors, and Hamden residents know that I indeed requested the item to be put on this week's agenda. For reasons that were a little muddy, it did not make it to the agenda. But I do want this to be considered as my official request to add to the town, add town office hours to the agenda for the next council meeting, which will be held on March sixteenth, two thousand fifteen.
Thank you. Counselor Shakespeare?
I must say, I don't disagree with that at all. However, moving on, since it's not on the agenda, and Counselor Marble mentioned about the Jake Brake signs. Is that what you call Jake Brakes?
Engine braking.
Engine braking, yeah, okay.
We, when we did the ordinance, you could not call them Jake Brakes because a Jake Brake is a, is a term that, it's a company name. And they notified us that would be.
Oh, yes, we couldn't call it that.
That's right.
Okay. Anyways, I, I remember the day when this, these council chambers were full of citizens who were quite irate about the problem of using their engine brakes, especially coming down through Route Nine. We had, back then, a lot of out-of-state trucks coming down, which were hauling a lot of trash, per se, from out-of-state to Soya, Arsoya Mountain at the time, and other places. And it was, I must say, since I live on Route Nine, quite annoying at times to hear those engine brakes. However, I think it's lessened quite a bit now. But I do know we have signs that, I believe, at every entrance to the town of Hamden on just about every road, because I've seen them. So anyways, that's my comment.
Thank you. Counselor McAvoy?
Thank you. First of all, congratulations to the Hamden Broncos for, you know, for the state title again. When I brought up the, the engine brake sign thing, I recalled asking about this a couple of years ago. And, I mean, I couldn't find, you know, where there's an ordinance on it. I thought someone said that there wasn't one, but I did find it. I went back and it's in underneath the roads or highways or something like that. Whether it's enforceable or not is another thing, but, so I stand corrected. You, you know, I have no objections to the signs being there. But I just want to remind everybody to shop local and buy American. Good night, Hamden.
Counselor Marble?
Couple of things. I can't remember if it was a week ago, Wednesday or Thursday, but we had that terrible pileup on ninety-five. And the Bangor Daily News had a story the next day about a Hamden resident named Al Nygren, who's a firefighter and I think an EMT in Waterville. The story talked about how he, off duty, attended to that scene and helped triage people. So I contacted Sue and town staff about the idea of recognizing him for that. And Sue and Joe Rogers got back to me and said some of our staff were involved in that as well. So what I'd like to propose is that we invite them, anyone that was there, to the next town meeting on the sixteenth and give them recognition for that kind of work, because I think we should do that. The other thing is minor. At a previous council meeting, a member of the public, to me, felt like the person was chiding counselors about remembering, you know, who we're working for and, and why we're here. And that it's not about lobbyists, it's about the citizens. And I want that person and everybody to know that, in my opinion, this is local government, and this is all about us, and it's all about citizens, and has nothing to do with issues that belong at the state and federal level. And frankly, at least in my short term, don't come into play here. Thanks.
Thank you. And I guess for my comment tonight, I'd like to repeat what Counselor McAvoy said. I want to thank the high school boys for an excellent year, for winning the gold ball again. They should, we, I went down to the game with my wife and they showed real good teamwork together. They, none of those boys wanted all the glory. They, they worked as a team. And I looked around and the Hamden side was packed full. And we're playing Portland. And we had way more people than Portland. And I said, you know, it's pretty good. It shows the community atmosphere that we have in this town. And it made you kind of proud to be part of Hamden, you know. People showed up that didn't have kids involved in any of those sports, just showed up to support. And I thought it was a great thing for Hamden. Thank you.
Moved. Second.